Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Ready.
Okay.
We are ready.
It is Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, 7:34 PM, and it's a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is now called to order for the invocation.
Good evening. Let's bow our heads, please. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings which you bestow upon us daily. We ask that you give clarity and guidance to our city leaders and elected officials so that they continue to make the right decisions when it comes to the wellness of the city and its residents. We pray for the people of Ukraine who continue to be persecuted unjustly. Please protect our military servicemen and women, as well as our law enforcement officers and firefighters, so that they may return home safely after their tour of duty. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Please state any further budgeted legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padron.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy W. Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have four.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 5th, 2022, regular commission meeting.
You have a motion?
Make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a motion, a second by whoever you want. Pick one.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Item passes. Item five, public comments.
Anyone for a public comment? Seeing none? Next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. I submitted a report late this afternoon. I'd like to go through some of the items just for the benefit of the public and to update the commission on what we're doing. Our holiday schedule starts November. City Hall will close Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. There will be garbage collection and police service as customary. City Hall will close again on Thursday, November 24th, and Friday, November 25th, 2022, for Thanksgiving. Again, we will have garbage collection and police service as customary. Veterans Day, as customary, we are ordering a wreath to be placed in front of City Hall honoring all of our veterans on Veterans Day. That'll be ordered early next week. The next item on my report is we have confirmed our first meeting between the City of West Miami and PLE, the Union for Certain Public Services Employees, and that meeting is scheduled for November 30th. We are working to produce requested information to the attorney representing the bargaining unit. The city attorney has expressed his intent to sit in during the contract negotiations. I've asked the city attorney for a proposal for his services in connection with the PLE negotiations. We will bring the results to you once negotiations are concluded with the recommendations. The next item on my report deals with a Department of Environmental Protection, which is a state agency, and their audit finding. The city was subject of a recent audit from DEP, a state of Florida agency, on the city's operation of its municipal's separate storm sewer system. The findings of the audit were disclosed in the attached letter from DEP addressed to Mayor Diaz-Padron and to Juan Penna, our Director of Public Services. The findings include an array of deficiencies that the city is working to correct, such as the creation of a standard operating procedures manual, training of multiple city employees, inspection records of our pump stations to include inspections and maintenance, drains, manholes. In the audit, there is another issue raised, and that references our lack of disseminating the public information that we are required to disseminate. Mr. Penn, I hope I haven't left anything else out. I have attached a copy of the report. Our city engineers working with Mr. Penn and developing a corrective action plan to address all the deficiencies identified by the audit. We will keep the mayor and city commission informed of the progress made. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, we're happy to address those, or I can move on to the other items. The Thanksgiving employee lunch is scheduled for Thursday, November 17th, 2022, at 12:30 PM. Cari will be sending out calendars and reminders between now and then. We hope that the mayor and city commission will be able to join us. The community center luncheon for the holidays starts with the Thanksgiving celebration on Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, at noon as customaries. The turkeys donated by Mikosuki tribes, thanks to our Commissioner Luciano Suarez, will be delivered on Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. Our city attorney is donating, he has donated. I have a check now in my possession for $800, which is his second year contribution to the community center, and this is going to help the city with purchasing all the trimmings for the turkey for the seniors to have a very nice Thanksgiving meal. And we prepare for them a grocery bag with all the trimmings. And so, we're very appreciative of his past contribution to the center last year and along with the contribution made this year. That concludes my report. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to respond to this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney, once again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on the manager's report? Seeing none? Next item.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city.
Yeah, we'll try to make him report as little as possible on this, in this meeting. Next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Frank Alonso's not here this evening, but Jose Nessi is sitting in for him. Welcome back, Mr. Nessi.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. We haven't seen you in a long time. We missed you.
Yes.
Good to see you.
And I believe you mentioned you have no report, correct? So, next item.
Item nine, committee report.
Do I have any, anybody have a committee report?
Just to update the public who is listening in, we had a meeting for the rec advisory board just before this meeting. We added a couple of items to the comp plan, to this for the city, and it was a successful meeting.
And I guess I'll just take this opportunity as committee report to say congratulate, and I will put in a memo with a signature on it, but congratulate the team, the West Miami staff and employees for putting on a great Halloween event. It was very, well, more than well attended, but even with that, I received only really incredible feedback. So, good job, really good job. You know, if every event could be like that, and usually is, you know, we've made a lot of happy residents and impressed a lot of visitors. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Lot of happy kids.
That's what it's all about.
And we'll make sure to send something out to everyone involved in that production because it's, I know, a big team effort.
Mayor, we are preparing a memo for your signature in my office to put out to all the employees, thanking them for the hard work and dedication.
Good, thank you. Next item.
Item 10, unfinished business. And Mr. Mayor, for items A and B, the legal counsel for the applicant has requested to defer these two items until next meeting of November 16th.
Okay. Do we need a motion to defer?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Deferred. On next item, may I proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 11, under new business agenda item, this is item 11A, second reading, a public hearing. In ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami amending chapter four, animals unfowed, article one, section four, eight, sanctions to allow for citizens at their own expense to humanly trap cats for the purpose of implementing humane population control of community cats through trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return services, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date. This item is sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
So, this item came to me when I was walking doors during the past election, actually. It was pointed out to me by a resident that we have this in ordinance, which I didn't realize. There is a county program that actually pays for and distributes cat traps for this purpose already, but our residents can't take advantage of that legally because we have an ordinance that prohibits it at the moment. So, it's a very simple ordinance, it just changes that part to allow for the trapping of cats for humane neutering and vaccination and to return to the community, and we can start taking advantage, or residents can start taking advantage of that county program. The only thing, I know we made amendment to the title. I ran this by the cat network, and the only, they were happy we were doing it, but they just made a recommendation on language to change out the word stray cats to community cats. I know we had made an adjustment to the header already, but the title, but we needed to change it in the ordinance as well. And I believe there's, I can find the ordinance here. Give me a second.
I like stray cats better.
I know, me too.
Sounds better. There's even a song.
Yes, is it there? Are you on the first page?
Yeah, there's, in the sections, there's a, well, you know, we'll just, wherever it says stray cat, we'll put it as a community cat in the ordinance. And that opened up the discussion or a motion.
Just to add to what you said, Mr. Mayor, the Miami Dade Animal Services, that program is called the Tip the Trapper Initiative, and it's part of that TNVR program by changing, by changing what we did to trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return, like you suggested last meeting, that's the same program the county has. It's $15 per cat that you take in, and then you can get the trap from the animal services. I actually spoke with them earlier today. It's a first come, first served basis. There's a deposit that you have to give, I think it's like 30 bucks, something like that, and then when you return, it's actually $50, when you return the cage, then they give you a deposit back.
So, they actually incentivize, like, they actually pay you to do this. Yeah, so, you know, assuming we pass this ordinance today that allow our residents to be legal on our end to do it, I think we should probably promote that program to especially certain neighborhoods that are asking for it. There's pockets of neighborhoods that have this problem more than others, which is where the idea came from. So, I think we can definitely take advantage of the fact that the county is willing to upfront, you know, costs and distribute and have their own program on it, so we can distribute that information.
And is there a chain of custody? You take the cat in, and when he's done, do you bring the cat back, or?
Yeah, the idea is you release it back into the community, but you release it spayed and neutered, so it doesn't continue to populate the community.
But you, you would be responsible for it?
Yeah.
So, you trap the cat, take the cat there, and then when the cat's ready, go pick him up and bring him back?
Right, you're responsible for it.
Releasing the community. Okay, alright.
Yeah, and there's a reason the county and that we want to do it as well. It's safer for the cat, too. It reduces many different forms of cancers roaming for these animals, so they don't get hit by cars. And after taking them in to get, to be part of this program, they actually get their ears tipped, they get a little piece off, so then you can identify that that cat has already been taken in.
And just to clarify, and reiterate, upon Vice Mayor's suggestion, I did run this ordinance by the cat network, and they were more than okay with it. They viewed it as a very positive step.
Great.
Any other discussion or motions?
I'll make a motion.
Mayor, excuse me.
Go ahead.
You have to open the public hearing.
Alright, it's a second reading. We haven't had an ordinance in a little while. Public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance for adoption?
Motion. Second.
Motion, a second? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Next item.
Item 11, the tabulation report for citywide drainage improvement 2022 project. City Clerk, City Engineer. Would you like to report, Mr. Penna?
Go ahead.
Okay. On September 16th, 2022, the bids for the project, the citywide drainage improvement 2022 project, were publicly opened at the City West Miami City Hall, and four bids were received as follows. ADA engineering, $538,697.68. Team contracting, $737,844.30. IMECO, IMECO Inc., $376,364. And Magolc Inc., $368,127, $20. And, Mr. Penna, you may proceed. That concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, the bids submitted were reviewed by myself and Frank Alonso, and Mr. Magolc, I mean, Mr. Gonzalez from Magolc Inc. is the lowest bidder at $368,120. This is for the projects that were listed in the PTP plan as work that needed to be done in order to complete a road that we started expansion on when they did the town homes on 66th Avenue. The realigning of that catch basin roadway and intersection is part of this plan. And then we have a couple of spot repairs that we need to do on 14th and 58th Avenue. And the other one is on 59, I think it's 5950, Southwest 16 Terrace, for the area there that floods out. Although these three projects are being funded by PTP funds dedicated to that, our initial estimate was $438,000, and it came in under our budgeted amount.
You're correct about 59th and 16th Terrace.
Yes.
Yeah, and we've had discussions about potentially amending some of the, not this plan, but potentially amending some of our appropriations on the federal funds to address some pockets of flooding that we've had in the city. Small, you know, street cities aren't hooked up to the stormwater system, so we'll be bringing that back at some point when we have a little more clear idea of how the federal funding is shaking out. So, on this item, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Penna?
We worked previously with these people, right?
They are the ones that are doing our water projects.
Yeah, they're doing very well.
Correct.
Make a motion.
We have to reach a resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item 11C, resolution of mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami accepting the recommendation to award that certain contract on bid number 2022-01152022 to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Magolc Inc., in the amount of $368,120, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the project under bid number 2022-0815202, providing for effective date.
Mr. Mayor, before you vote on it, I'd like to ask you to include the wording to be funded 100% by the surtax proceeds for our 80% transportation share.
Absolutely. So, do we have a motion as amended, Commissioner Suarez? You make a motion as amended to add that language?
Yes.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? Call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item.
Next item, item D, discussion request for approval in reference to proposal for AMI Engineering for the 50-year certification for city buildings by city manager and city engineer.
I would like to yield to this presentation to Mr. Penna, and then I'll chime in when it comes to the resolution.
Alright.
We would like for you to take action this evening on this item.
Okay. Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, our building here at City Hall and all of our other buildings that are from the 1940s and 50s have reached their 50-year recertification. We did this back 10 years ago when we reached our 40, now we reached our 50. We have to go through all the systems in the buildings, the electrical, the windows, the doors, everything to make sure it's up to code, and this is Mr. Alonso's fee for doing that certification for the city.
The funding comes from last year's budget we reserved and designated. We're in the process of reserving and designated from engineering reserves and some monies from contingency fund to cover this out of last fiscal year's budget. So, whenever it's paid, it becomes just a cash issue, and we have the cash for that as well.
Motion. Do we have an amount? Do we have an amount coming?
Yes, I believe that the proposal was, was the proposal not incorporated?
I saw it in here.
I saw it.
Thought I remember reading $12,500.
It was, give me one second if possible. Yes, it is in your packet.
Yeah, $12,500.
And... I believe it was $12,500. I'm almost certain that that was the amount.
No, I'm reading it right on the letter. I'm just, just want to make sure that amount is correct.
Just want to make sure we proceed correctly here. I think that we need to approve the amount, right?
Correct.
We noted he shook and said yes.
And...
Yes.
And...
Okay, $12,500.
And I think that in today's fees, engineering fees, to do this type of work, I think we're getting a bargain from Frank, from Mr. Alonso.
And it's for two properties, correct?
That's correct.
The 1811 building on 67th Avenue that we leased, and the City Hall building.
Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion on this item?
But the proposal is contemplated in your packet, it's $12,500, and by the way, that fee was negotiated down. Frank came in, and I asked him to please revisit his proposal. It was more money than that, and he worked with us so that we could accomplish our budget goals.
Right. Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, item E, resolution of mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami approving that certain proposal from professional services by AMI Engineering and NLC to provide inspections and certifications required by Miami Dade County Ordinance 811F for certain building structures as better described in attached exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents required to accomplish said purpose, providing for effective date. We had a motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
To be funded?
To be funded by fiscal year ended September 30th.
Okay. Okay. Okay, manager, noted. And next item, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Item F, presentation of five-year PTP transit transportation plan by Director of Public Works.
Hello again.
The revolving door. As you're aware, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners, every year we have to update the plan as it moves on down the line to projects that we've accomplished and projects we wish to fund for the future. The present scenario includes using the funds from PTP on the transit side for the freebie transportation service that we have at present, and the... Other items on the transportation side I don't have.
There were two sheets in the Excel spreadsheet.
Right, the pink sheet was not printed.
Okay. Let me see if I can read them off.
In the packet, what was provided to you?
But it had two workbooks. You had to flip.
Okay.
Mr. Penna, I found the email. You want to read it off my phone, the projects? And the purpose of us certifying this while he's looking for it, the purpose that we got to certify the use of the PTP money into these projects is that every year, depending on the estimated municipal disbursement or distribution of the funds, we may get less money or more money, and it just so happens that their initial projections were lower than what we received as our final projection, which now matches our approved budget. So, that's why these recertifications, if you would, of the use of the money, it has to be certified every year by staff.
Right, the money, the surtax money is allocated proportionally to the cities in Miami Dade County.
Based on population.
Based on population, correct. You ready?
Yes. Roadway construction, which is the first category that we have, for the next five years, we budgeted $1 million, and this is to do milling and resurfacing on the roadways as we go through the water project, and putting in new roads after the water project is complete. This covers everything going west from 59th Avenue to 66th Avenue for the next five years, at $200,000 a year. The next category after that is right-of-way maintenance, which is the power, the bills that we pay FPL for the lighting, that's part of our maintenance effort, and that's at $100,000 per year that we're spending to light the streets. That's paid out of PTP, so for the next five years, it'll be half a million dollars. Street sweeping of our streets, we spend roughly about $12,000 a year doing that, and for the next five years, that'll be $60,000. Then we go into construction of local drainage and road improvements, and we budgeted $375,000 over the next five years, and that is to do the spot repairs that the mayor was talking about at $75,000 per year for improvements. The other work that he referenced is out of the federal money that we are receiving to enhance this work. And then the other category that we have is for administration costs that they allow us under the PTP guidelines, and that's to maintain all the bookkeeping and the records that we have to maintain for PTP. That's at $23,000 a year, and for the next five years. And then we have as another category, a speed limit sign replacement. It's at, for installation, 25-hour mile, 25-mile-hour speed limit signs, every quarter mile is required by code, $50,000 for the next two years, and then after that, we'll revisit the schedule. As I said, every year, we have to visit the schedule anyway, and whatever falls off, we could add up.
And when is it, is there another category there? Was the last category?
That's the last category.
When's the last time that we participated in the CITT audit? I know that when I served on the board, we had just come out of one, and...
Yeah, that was about two years ago, three years ago.
Two years ago. It used to be every eight years, and now it's every three to four years.
So are we in a round cycle now?
We're in the middle of the next cycle.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we win over 10,000 residents after the census?
We don't have a formal census. I mean, we have estimates from the University of Florida, but we never got any...
Census answer?
No, sir, never.
We have any results?
Yeah, the information CITT and Miami-Dade County's using is from the University of Florida. And they have us at 7,200.
Right.
We have over 10,000?
No.
Not yet?
7,200 is what they show us.
Right, which these aren't the official numbers that the census is...
Correct.
Yeah, we're definitely having an undercount, but hopefully the census, the actual census puts in a better, you know, perspective, but...
The census intake, I think, occurred right when the pandemic hit.
Yes, no, no. Yeah, it's going to cause us some problems. But even with that, because of the incredible sales, you know, the surtax bringing in so much money, we did have an increase in revenue from that, right?
Yes.
So...
Yes.
All right. This is a report. This is not a resolution, correct? No, this is a resolution.
We have a resolution.
We have a resolution, Mayor.
This is a resolution.
And we also have, in that budget that Mr. Penna presented to you this evening in that matrix, it's also inclusive of the traffics, the engineering costs as well.
Yeah, perfect. All right, any discussion or motions on this item?
May I read the resolution, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Item G, Resolution Of Mayor And City Commission Of City Of West Miami Authorizing The City Manager To Transmit The Five-Year Transportation And Transit Plan Together With Attachments To Miami-Dade County Office Of The Citizen Independent Transportation Trust, CITT, In accordance with the agreement with the City Of West Miami For The Use Of Funds Providing For Transmitting Providing For Effective Date.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item H, Resolution Of The Mayor And City Commission Of City Of West Miami Authorizing The City Manager To Execute The Interlocal Agreement Between The City Of West Miami And Miami-Dade County Office Of Management And Budget Accepting A Donation By District Six Commissioner And Approved By The Board Of County Commissioner On October 6, 2022 In The Amount Of $67,000 For The Purchase Of A 2023 Ford F-150 AWD Pickup Truck To Be Equipped With Public Safety Equipment And 22 Ballistic Shields Providing For Inclusion Of Exhibits To Include The Scope Of The Work Budget Forms And The Interlocal Agreement Signed By The Parties Providing For Effective Date.
Well, they're all listed there, but Chief, do you want to speak on any of these equipment that we're getting?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, this, these are, this is going to be a high-water vehicle, a high-debris vehicle, if you will. If we get a storm or anything like that, we really don't, we're not equipped, we don't have vehicles to actually respond over branches and maybe a house that's flooded, a yard that's flooded or something, the police cars are not going to do very well. So we want to start getting ready for any possibility in the future. And Commissioner Rebecca Sosa from District Six was gracious enough to offer it. And the other equipment is ballistic shields. The ballistic, we only have four ballistic shields that the guys transfer from one police car to the other per shift. And we have more guys than shields now at this point. So we'd like to have each one of them have a actual ballistic shield in the car with them in case, God forbid, we have an active shooter situation or gives the guys a little bit more confidence and safety to have some extra cover.
And so after this, this year, each car will be, will have a ballistic shield and each car will have an AED, right?
Correct.
So that's a good year.
Correct.
All right.
Yes, it has been a good year, I must say.
And is there, that's all it's covering here, right?
That is it.
Well, first of all, on behalf of the city, we thank Commissioner Rebecca Sosa for the generous donations to the police department, which will definitely be good, you know, put to good use. Does anyone have anything on this item? This is a resolution to accept the donations.
I want to make a comment. I think the police department should make a big plaque to Rebecca Sosa for this.
Absolutely.
Make a big one.
The size of the shield.
Because this is a big donation. This is a big donation, I tell you. This is a big donation. We appreciate, the city appreciates and the president.
We appreciate it very much also.
Thank you, Commissioner, if she's watching the meeting.
Does anyone have anything else?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Sosa.
I hope she's watching, because I know that's weird. We're just talking to the camera.
Hopefully she is.
Does anyone else have anything on this item? If not, can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the item.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item, Mr. Mayor.
Next item.
Item I, Report By The Office Of The City Manager In Reference To Evaluation And Appreciation Report Based Amendments And Request For Guidance On Whether Amendments Are Necessary. City Manager, City Attorney.
Thank you. The City Of West Miami presented with, presented the state, the Department Of Economic Opportunity, with information regarding the acknowledgement of the property rights element component in the comprehensive plan. But the state sent us a letter that was received by the mayor and by our office notifying us that the, basically, our information was not complete. So the lady whom I spoke to, and I want to get her name here, Barbara Powell, from the Department Of Economic Opportunity, basically clarified what we needed to do. And basically, what we need to do is either notify the state of Florida if we have comp plan amendments at this time, or suggested comp plan amendments at this time, or if we don't have suggested comp plan amendments at this time. And she provided me with two sample letters, depending on what this commission decides based on the fact that you are the ultimate planning agent for the City Of West Miami. So the letter basically has to address the element of the comp plan, if you would, if they're necessary or not. And she explained to me further, and Anari was my witness there, we spoke to her together, that the state has watered down the process for comp plan amendments. They used to be very strict about how we went about producing our comp plans and having it reviewed by the state. That agency of the state that used to review our comp plan has now passed on the baton to another agency, and that process has been watered down. So all we need to let them know is we're going to, you know, we're going to look into comp plan amendments or we're not. And we're going to acknowledge again the property rights element and make sure they're incorporated in our comprehensive plan. So both things were tied together.
Yeah. And the comp plan deals with the zoning of all lots, right? But in that, within that zoning, do we have to, in the comp plan, include things that we might wish to change in the zoning? For example, I'll give you an example. If this commission at some point wanted to look at the height of, maximum height of buildings and the C commercial use zoning, right? Is that something that we have to fall into the comp plan? Or is it something that...
I would say yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The comp plan doesn't include zoning. It includes land use.
Land use.
Right. I said zoning as a misnomer.
Correct.
Land use, right?
So you determine the land use, and then if that gets approved by the state and by us here, by your board, then at that point, you transfer it over to a zoning ordinance that would incorporate whatever changes were made.
Right, so in the, so I was just saying, in the comp plan, right? For example, I don't anticipate anyone will argue that the C commercial use corridor that we have should be anything else but what it is now, right? If, I'm going to throw an issue out again, just to, just to have an example. If we wanted to look at height, that would not be addressed in the comp plan, because that is a zoning, not even a zoning, that is a, well, that's part of the zoning code. Is that something that we have to address in the comp plan?
I guess, yes and no. The problem is that, see, in order to revert that to a lower density, that would might injure investments by investors that have...
Well, I'm going to stop you there, Mr. Attorney, because I don't want to, I don't want to put any words in anyone, you know, anyone's mouth in terms of what the city will liable or not liable for. Is it something that would have to be in the comp plan or not? I'm not talking about any future liability of the city, or is it something that would have to appear in the comp plan or not if it's something the city wanted to change?
If I may. If you wish to lower the height of the building and stuff like that, yes, I would encourage you to include it in the comp plan.
Right.
So everyone knows the intent of the board.
And it would have to be... That's the point, intention. That's the main thing.
Exactly.
We had to come to a public hearing.
Right.
And advise everybody that this is our plan for the future.
Correct.
And it has to be approved by you sitting as an open planning agency.
Right, so is it, I know we have the EAR and we have money that we allocated to that, right?
Yes.
Correct, in last budget?
We have designated money and reserves for the comp plan amendment. Yes.
Is this, the EAR includes, includes going out to a third party to do an evaluation on it?
Correct.
Correct.
Is that something that would be done prior or in conjunction with a comp plan amendment? Or is that, so...
In conjunction with, I think, at this point.
So what do we need to give the state at this point?
What we need to tell the state...
That we intend to have the EAR report done?
You need to tell the state whether the comp plan, the comp plan amendments are necessary or not. That's the extent of it.
Whether you want to review it or not.
Yeah, I think, I think we're at a point in the city where we've had sufficient, I'm going to say sufficient, where we've had enough development to see what has worked and what has not. And I think we should definitely review some things, because we've had, you know, issues with increased police activity, we've had issues with increased fire rescue activity, we have a lot of parking issues. And frankly, the mixed-use element that we had hasn't really been used. So are we incentivizing things correctly? So I think we definitely have to look at it at this point. Obviously not tonight, but I think there's definitely going to be necessary changes we have to make coming and putting into the comp plan before it becomes an issue with investor-backed expectations. So I don't know if anyone agrees with me, but I think when, in this last, you know, you know, we've seen from the public and we've seen from here some of the issues, and I think we do have to work to correct the issues that exist in the current, in our current, you know, zoning and future land use map, Commissioner.
Well, I remember when we were working in the comp plan, we was expressing to the state and the residents the vision, the idea, the plans for the future that we have. And this is the comp plan. What do you think for the next years, you know, a couple of years? The planning of the city, the way the city should be. Like I told you, this parking, this trailer park, they be developed. The two acres south will be dedicated to the city for a park area, because according with the population, we have to have some park area. Things like that are in the comp plan. So this is not only the height, was just the use of the land and the need of the city, because sometimes cities need some kind of functions, and that's a comp plan. The vision that you may have for the next 10 years. And we did the comp plan, how, 15 years ago?
2015.
The last revision we did was for the economic development plan, which was 2017 by the time it was adopted.
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago. I mean, it was, so now, if you think the majority of the commission want to look again to the comp plan or review, whatever, or think it's enough, it's good enough, don't broken, don't fix it, that's something that we will have to discuss and talk about.
Right, and I think there's actually, there's definitely, and I have it in front of me, but there's definitely segments of, that if you look at it, for example, our last, our last report that we did, we had a full buildout of our entire corridor. We had an estimated 3,000 additional residents. That's what it was, that's what the evaluation came back and told us. A full buildout of our entire corridor, we would have additional 3,000 residents. I don't care what that UF estimate say. We have, we have 3,000.
We're undercounting.
We have 3,000 residents additional without, I mean, already without a full buildout. Obviously, we're not near a full buildout of the corridor. So there's things that we definitely do address because of that. And I think, you know, I understand why the city did what it did back then. We needed to incentivize, we didn't have anything. But now we have things and we have to look at what worked and what didn't. So what do you need from us today? Go ahead. I just want to ask this.
We need a decision from the commission with a vote, so that I can prepare a letter to the state, to DEO, letting them know that the commission has found it necessary to, that you've decided that comprehensive plan amendments are necessary.
So that's all we need to talk about today? We don't need to talk about what they are or, correct?
Correct.
So all it is, we're looking at, we intend to look at it.
And I can read you the paragraph of the recommendation. And it would say, "In the case you feel that a comp plan review is necessary," it says, "A summary of the review is provided in the table attached to this letter. But based on this review, the City Of West Park, which is the sample letter I have, has determined that comp plan amendments are necessary to reflect changes in the state requirements since the adoption of the last update of the comprehensive plan."
Okay. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes only common sense that we review the comp plan. We've had enough time pass by, and we've had a lot of experience, some good and some bad. So, you know, we need to make adjustments based on these experiences that we've had. And, you know, as they say, the problem with experience is that you get the exam first and then you get the lesson. So we've had a lot of lessons. We've had many people come here to our commission meetings and voice their concerns and their issues. So we have to take that on their account, you know, because after all, we sit here to make the residents' quality of life better. So I think that by doing that, we'll be doing that and accomplishing that.
Is anyone else...
So you want to make a motion about a review or not?
Do we need a motion on this, or what do we need on this?
You need to instruct me to, and I would do it by motion.
By motion, okay.
Right. To instruct the notification.
You were talking, now, tell me.
I can pass the gavel, I can pass the gavel and make the motion, but whatever you want. You want to make a motion? I have a motion over there.
Second.
A motion and a second. Go ahead. Call the roll, if you want.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Thank you, yes.
Five zero, item passes.
I have a question for a manager.
Sir.
Manager. The letter they send you is, if you, if we send a letter that we need a comp plan, is similar if we make a motion to, we need review, the comp plan, right?
Right.
Will be the same, the answer will be...
The same.
Will be the same, I mean, the effects, the effects of the answer will be the same.
And all I need to let them know is that this body, this body has determined that comprehensive plan amendments are necessary.
Okay, perfect.
That's a, that's a good clarification. That's a good clarification, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you.
And then we work over that. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blanes. You're welcome.
Next item.
Item J, Discussion In Reference To Possible Relocation Of The City's Community Center Program To The Rebecca Sosa Multipurpose Facility To Pay The Way For The Expansion Of The West Miami Police Department And Administrative Offices By City Manager.
Before you begin, Manager, I want to be very clear at the table, because I, no, I don't believe we should make any final decision tonight on this. This is a concept, and one that would have to be kind of worked on, smoothed over, if it's something we want to do or not, right? So just to be very clear with everyone, I don't believe that either way, we should make a final decision on this item tonight.
Agreed.
This is a first step, a concept, an idea. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Right. And before we take it any further, I wanted to come to you to let you know that we have been looking at the possibility of... we have been looking at the possibility of sending the seniors, or possibly in the future, sending the, the seniors to the multipurpose, the Rebecca Sosa multipurpose facility building. And I thought it would be a good time, because since they are designing the plans now for the wellness center, and so many things are going on in the park, I felt it would be a good opportunity to bring up the conversation. And you know, nothing happens overnight, especially in government. So, I went, I went ahead and I had Evelyn conduct a very simple anonymous survey of the seniors that attend our congregate program. And I was, well, first of all, I'm kind of disappointment, disappointed, because we've lost a lot of congregate members since COVID. And our numbers are, we're, we're looking at, right now, 53, the day we took the survey. We had 53 congregate seniors on, onsite. And they participated in a survey, and interestingly enough, 37 of them said they would like to continue going to the Rebecca Sosa multipurpose building. 16 of them would rather stay here.
Continue?
Continue, because they're there now.
Staying, staying there.
Staying there. They would like to continue.
So, 37 would want to move?
Would want to move.
Because they're there now for, because early voting set up at the community center.
Right. Now, the, the pros that they, that they highlighted were that the facility is larger there, the new gym, that they will have access to the new gym, easy access also to freebie. Some of our seniors are starting to call freebie for rides to and from the center. And I don't know if you saw the report that I emailed to you yesterday, the participation in freebie has increased. So, take a look at that. We had, I believe, 790 riders for last month, which is a lot more than we've ever had. The parking availability is better at the rec center than it is here. It would, they feel that it would also increase attendance, more congregate clients to come. And it would invite new enrollment opportunities. The only thing they didn't like was that it was kind of far from where they shop next door, and the bakery, which is where they go to.
Right. So, so, and, so I know, and, you know, my, my biggest concern with it, and we discussed it, was the summertime. That's really the only time when it's, when it's really concerning, was when you have the kids there at the same time as, as the seniors. Because other, other than that, every other time period, really, the kids come after the seniors are gone.
Their hours don't coincide.
The hours aren't the same. But then, you see the pros, and you see the space that they have, you see the idea that the seniors during the day will be out, be outside, which I think is super important. You know, and, and the other issue is the parking, which a lot of them still drive, they, they drive there. And they complained to me a lot about having to walk from across 62nd Avenue, and which is a very dangerous, I mean, not very dangerous, but it's, it's, I'd rather they not be walking down our busiest interior street. So, there's a lot of pros there in the parking. So, you know.
And there's, sorry to interrupt you, there's life safety issues back here with seniors. They like to walk from the back, cross, go across to the grocery store. And when this program started, the city did not have that many vehicles, either, you know, including patrol vehicles or, or our commercial vehicles. And so, we're just afraid, because they don't want to go through the front, that someone may, may wind up getting injured back there.
So, there's, I see, I see a lot of merit to it, frankly. If it's done right, and if, if we can solve that, that separation, make sure that the kids and the seniors don't have overlap at all, really. And, and I think the biggest, frankly, the biggest portion of that time, because I know, I know what your thought process is in terms of taking advantage of the renovations to further build out that space to allow even more space for the seniors, is just the, the time when the seniors get there, overlapping with the time that the kids get there during summer camp.
Right.
That, that drop-off pickup time is, is the only thing that I'm concerned about. But I, and I think that can be massaged, but I'll leave it to the table for discussion now, see what, you know, what we think about it.
I, I, as you said, this is the first conversations. I don't, if we start to discuss, but we are going to be online here.
No, no, no.
And I want to go back to the West City. Because this is a conversation, this is.
It's very important.
A discussion.
Yep.
So, I think this is, there should be more discussions about this.
Including with the seniors.
Because there are pros and cons.
Yeah.
So, for me, what I hear tonight is enough.
Right.
And next time, we talk more.
And, and I think we should also have further discussions with the actual users of, you know, the program, right? Because that's also really important. We don't want to do anything that they don't ultimately benefit or like.
This is the first conversation, so I think we are, it's a lot of things involved.
Oh, yep. Go ahead.
Manager, can you put together for us a pro and con type list?
Of course.
Where all, you know, where, where all the positive things, you know, that, that, that you can foresee? And then, of course, all the, all the things that are not going to be, also, you know, what we gain, the use, the use of space, you know, how we're going to utilize that?
Right.
In both places.
Right.
Yeah. And, and on that point, Vice Mayor, if I can interrupt you for a second, because I agree with you. Into, to exit that conversation on our side, whenever this comes up again, can we get the utilization plan for, or the, or an idea of utilization for the community center space, which I'm assuming will include police department expansion?
Yes, yes.
But what the, what the plan is, or an idea for the, for the expansion of space? The, can we get the intended solution for the, the overlap of time when the kids are there for summer camp?
Yes.
What would be the plan there?
Yes.
And then, as well as any solutions that you guys come up with to what, the things that the seniors don't like? For example, the bakery, the grocery, you know, the grocery store. I, I know we had some discussions about that.
Right.
There's any ideas that you and Evelyn can drum up there on how to make, how, how that would be made easier? And then, if there's any conceptual plans that you have for this, for the recreation space, for the Rebecca Sosa Center?
Right.
On what that would look like with an expansion for this purpose? Also, bring that back to us.
I think that you passed today a small site plan, because we are getting an added space, and basically, the seniors would go under this concept, very preliminary, very raw, I'm not there yet. From a conceptual standpoint, the seniors need to be close to restrooms and the kitchen area, because everything has to flow perfectly for them.
Yes.
So, we would, in, under this assumption, we would provide them with the existing space of the big room, which is what they like. They like the space. Now, behind where the playroom is, where you have all the, the game tables and the TV, concurrent with that, there's going to be about 900 square feet of, they call it a yoga room.
Correct.
And that is where we would use to put the kids in, so that we don't, so we can keep the kids separate from our seniors.
And there would have to be, you know, additional little offices built for, for staff.
Right. Now, small offices will build, will be, would be built for staff, joining John Michaels, and just making some, some very.
Minor.
Minor modifications. Because staff, and in the case of the director, specifically the director, I believe she needs an office here, because when the alliance comes for their audit, it is very important that she has access to the accounting team, because the monitors from, the, the, coming from the Alliance for Aging, they want to interact with the accounting and management office as well.
Okay. So, I, I mean, if, if there's any conceptual, if there's anything conceptual that, that can be brought back to us on that, how that looks?
Sure.
On, on that idea, I would ask that we request from Frank Alonso, not only a conceptual at the rec center, but a conceptual of this space.
Of course.
Right.
To see how it actually benefits the police department and city home.
Right. Because the, you know, the, that's the other thing that we're not talking about tonight, really, is that, is the, what the space would mean for the community center. We know that we couldn't get past appropriations this year for the second story. So, this would kind of make the second story a non-issue anymore.
Right.
We would just fortify that area and use that for the police station expansion. Even if, you know, even we can go, I don't know, was that, was that, was this community center fortified for, you know?
It is.
It is?
It is.
So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to redo anything there?
Not structurally.
Minor.
That was, that was retrofitted to accommodate, after Hurricane Andrew, I believe, the, the structure next door was fortified to become a hurricane shelter. So, we know that it's built, it's got the generator out back, and it was built to withstand strong winds.
Yeah. So, so, we can also get what that concept would look like? Because we have to look at it from both sides, what, what we would benefit, and on each side, and, and where we would have limitations, so.
And the conversion would, would require different type of doors and stuff like that for police department use.
Right. So, so, so kind of bring it all back, so we can later on have more robust discussion.
I think we have to think about it, because we have to see the benefits.
Yep.
If there is for the police department, if there is not. The second story, the, the first one was making reports to the second, the money was almost made. So, we have to see the benefits for the police, the benefits for the space in this area, the benefit in summer with the childrens. So, I don't think we are going to.
No.
I'm sorry, I have to go.
No, no, it's fine. We're actually, we're actually ending the meeting. So, bring that all back to us. Does anyone have anything else? Because if not, I'll just go to the order.
I do. I have something.
Go ahead.
Mr. Penner?
You can keep talking. We have points still.
We had a, a major gas leak yesterday. The company is doing the pot of water project, hit a two-inch line.
Correct.
And correct me if I'm wrong, or.
Can I?
If, you know, this is not true, but I was speaking to one of the people from Florida City Gas, and they said that this had happened in March. That in March, when they were doing our, our, you know, the east side, the east project that's completed, that they, that they hit a, a line then. And now, they.
I don't recall that one. I know that they hit a service line on the same avenue, on 59th, towards 9th Street, around at the beginning of the project.
Yeah.
This, this face, not the first face.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah.
But that was just a service line that was abandoned, and they capped it.
So, so if we can have.
This unfortunately, just to provide you with the information, this unfortunately was a crossing where four lines crossed, okay? And the reason why it took so long for repair is because you can't just crimp a gas line and allow that pressure to build up on the line without relieving it somewhere else. So, they had to physically go out there and locate all these lines, and assure themselves as they were closing one line, seeing what the pressure rise was on the other side.
Yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really concerned about an explanation of what happened.
Okay.
I'm more concerned about if they know exactly where all these gas lines are.
That's, that's the issue. And that's the issue that will be debated between the contractor, City Gas, and the claims against them.
So, so, so can we have Frank, Mr. Alonso, look into that, to work with?
Sure.
Contractor, to make sure that we get Florida City Gas? I'm sure, I'm sure they're going to want to be involved, and they're going to want to have their input, because, you know, I'm sure that they spent a lot of money, you know, having all these crews out here, restarting all these meters? Because, you know, it, it, it's very involved. You know, they have to go to each home, they have to re, you know, reset, check, and, you know, do all kinds of things.
Correct.
So, can we do something to minimize this? To, 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 you know, hopefully, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to say that's not going to happen, but decrease the chances of this happening?
They.
If we can have them look into.
They try, but remember, we're an old city.